Archie. So first to school.
Hello, Mary Ellen.
Hi.
Okay. All right, can you hear them at all?
I can't. I don't know why. Because of. Set or.
Kind of pattern of feet.
They wouldn't look.
What's that?
They have to read. The Educational Plant Maintenance Association.
Yeah.
Testing.
So that's fine. We're on our end, good.
Okay.
Mary Ellen, can we hear, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Yep.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so. Limited audience tonight, so I told LCI, Lincoln County Tide Water Helicom not to come tonight. They're gonna come on June 2nd instead.
Oh, can I go home now?
Oh, you can go home now. Sorry.
No, that's okay. I just wrapped up a meeting and realized it got done sooner than I expected, Matt, so.
Yeah, it just, this just all happened in the last few hours, so. Okay. Thanks.
I will try to see you on June 2nd then.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, good people.
And I'm glad for the chance to say hello.
Don't take anything personally.
This is Jeff from, he's a volunteer with LCTV. He's helping us with our sound system. What he's done for us tonight, one of the things he's doing is he's got these speakers, microphones in front of all of you, and that allows people at home to hear you clearly. So that's, that's a significant improvement over what we had, and you can hear the volume on this. So we're set to go, we're recording.
Robin, get over.
Oh, yeah, we'll get Robin on the phone too, so she can approve the warrant.
Who did you guys pick everything up? But that's also the bad news. They're not like the directional mics you have at the town office. They're on the directional, they're pretty good. They're pretty good at picking up the whole room.
Give her the warning, Jeff.
Uh huh. Been two years. Saying things into mics that I shouldn't.
Hey, Robin. Drew has gathered.
I didn't tell you what just.
So. Turn it over to Mark.
Okay, can you hear me okay because we're in the car?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So we have the flag, we do the pledge.
Kyle, no. Yeah. We have a flag.
Oh, yeah.
See how close we can get here.
The flag. Of the United States of America.
For which it stands. The God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. So this meeting will be called in order. Yes, Matt, we're gonna change the. Things around a little bit if we're. We're gonna go to.
So if you go to, yeah, just go down payroll warrants, accounts payable warrants. Put a two of the official action items that'll allow. Robin and. And. And Josh to get underway.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant 64.
Second.
I was in favor. Robin.
Aye.
For most payroll, I mean. Accounts payable on 65.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for accounts payable warrant 65.
Second. Which one's the he won?
66.
Any discussion? I was in favor.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for accounts payable warrant 66. Second.
It's five builders.
Okay, all those in favor? Now you're.
Aye. Is that?
And then everyone else votes aye.
It's 64.
Yep.
64, 66.
If you would, if you have questions, feel free to ask, but on the Mile Street Reconstruction, I'm asking you to approve the RFP essentially in the same form that I sent it to you. There are engineers making some final changes to it. As you.
Overall, 172 pages and.
Yeah.
Pretty good to me.
Yeah. I made the mistake of. Both sides. On one side.
Now, I get a question, there was two elevations that we were looking at.
Yeah.
Can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, so the initial elevation that was designed was 10 feet, which is a foot and a half above the current elevation. It is within the current, it would be above the current floodplain, but it's not above the floodplain that's predicted, projected for 2050. So what we did is we asked for an alternate to the 12 feet, which is the same level or even higher that the waterfront committee is planning on for the waterfront project. So we thought that it'd be good to look a few decades out, so we won't be doing this again anytime soon. And I believe he flip-flopped them so that the alternate is the 10-foot, the lower elevation and the.
The base bed is 12. The base bed is 12. Is it 12? The 10 is the ultimate.
Yeah, the base is the 12.
So the cost savings on the 10, what it would be.
Yeah. So we'll see, see what the bids come back at.
And then that's good for 50 years and.
Well, who knows, you know, 2050 was the plan, so 30 more years now. Yeah. But, you know, depends what the, you know, what happens with sea level rise.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for bids for Mile Street Reconstruction.
Seconded. Any second?
My second.
Robin, did you have any questions on that?
No, I don't. I remember when this first came out that we had said to go with, you know, look at the higher elevation, so that's mine with me.
All right, and it's, it's taken them a while to, to get to that point because we needed to go back and get another permit from DEP.
Right.
Do you.
Oh, just need to vote on it.
You think the vote.
Yeah, I seconded.
I was in favor.
Aye.
Contract award for Hillside Cemetery wall construction.
I had some questions for Matt and on that about timetable. Trying to get it, once the start date starts, how long it's gonna be. Just to get that project, so we don't get into stagnation.
Now, Patty Whitton's on board now and. She talked to Jay, well, she talked to J and H and Jake responded by saying that he could get it done anytime, July, August, or September. And so based on that, I'm suggesting that as part of your motion, you say that the project has to be completed within 30 days after it starts, but no later than September 30th.
I mean, we need to get that. I just don't want it to sit there for two or three months on end. We've had that issue before.
Yeah, that, that gives him some flexibility. It also allows for, you know, the dry season and. Yeah, it meets our needs. Patty, do you have anything to add to that?
Other than apology for being a couple minutes late, I was working on the stone until the last minute.
You're, you're right on time.
Oh, good. So I hope I didn't miss something, but no, that sounds good, and I'm sure once he stages the job and gets going, it'd be in his best interest to get it done quickly because otherwise he has to mow around everything.
Right. Right.
So that is the motion on the table. If you can jump pretty under this section. I have the motion to approve the. Contract award Hillside Cemetery wall construction to J and H Land State. With the, with the conditions of the 30, 30 days.
Yeah, it needs to be completed 30 days on start date.
Later than September 30th.
And it's also contingent on getting the remaining funds at the town meeting.
No.
Also in that motion, it has to be a wave of the town charter.
No, and it's gone out to bid.
Oh, we went out to bid. I mean, we went out for quotes and that, so. Well, oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, it wasn't advertised, so, yeah, I did ask that it be, that you waived.
On the favor of the town charter requirement.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mark.
Have a person seconded, any more discussion?
Yeah, Robin seconded it.
So you guys.
You guys can fight about it.
Okay.
But the only discussion I got is, I just think there's too many times that will. Charter. I do think that we need to look at that number a little bit to what we're gonna end up putting in there is reasonable. That $5,000 number has been there for a very long time. I do think that we need to address it in the, in the future. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Playbook. I was concerned about the.
I got four to zero, but I will vote against.
I go to you against. Just because of the town charter.
There was competitive pricing.
Well, I think it should be following the town charter a little bit and putting it in the paper like they asked for and. And while that. And we've been going from 5,000 up to 40,000 on waiving that. I think we need to figure out where we're gonna weave that town charter. Just bring the charter up to date so that the town manager can do what they gotta do, and then beyond that, we're gonna. Get on it. We just need to talk about it a little bit more.
I, I still think we don't wanna go too high. It's a system of checks and balances. So, you know, my, my thought is you don't go any higher than 15, so if that's, that's on my high end, so when you guys think about it, that's where I'm at, so.
Yeah, I do think, you know.
We have a discussion about it.
We have a discussion about it. It's outdated, that's all, you know, it's. We need to go by the town charter. What else we got there, Matt?
That's all we have to vote on, so maybe Josh can be let go to do his.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
His coaching, yeah.
So if Robin stays, stays on, then I don't need to. Jern Pat, because if she stays on or what.
Yeah, Robin, can you stay on a few minutes?
How much you wanna?
Okay.
All right, guys. Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll need it.
So. Okay, I can provide some updates here. Chase. Excavating finished up on Monday. So they're out of there. You'll get their final bill next week. American Rescue Plan funding opportunities. I was hoping that those would be more general. But they tend to be. Much more specific, much more particular to certain activities. And Mary Ellen and I talked the other day about what could possibly be funded. Definitely broadband is in the, in the categories of something that can be funded through this plan. I'm hoping that we could use some of these funds for access to healthcare, namely the Mile Street Causeway. So we'll, we'll find out about that, but that's, it's still yet to be determined exactly what is and what is not eligible. We need to make our request to the state of Maine because we fall into the category of a non-entitlement entity. And we'll, we'll, we'll sort that out for you. I sent you a note on. Yeah.
Quick question, is the county gonna apply for any of those funds to do broadband counting wise?
Well, they've got, you know, they've already been allocated or awarded. I don't, they don't have the, the cash yet, but they've already received a commitment for 6.7 million. It was 6.7 for, for whatever the, they choose to use it for within the criteria that the, the federal government provides. So broadband is definitely something that. They could, they could focus on if they wanted with those funds. When I talked to Mary Ellen about this, Mary Ellen Barnes at Lincoln County Planning last week, she said that they have a task force that they've put together that will be meeting to decide on what the priorities are. And I'm sure they're in the same boat we are, where we're waiting for further clarification on what's eligible and what's not. But they, they do have quite a bit of. Money available to them that they're gonna have to make some decisions on, and, you know, I've been bending ears there as well. I, I think if possible, you know, if they could allocate a certain amount of that, that money for various towns for capital projects that we have going, I, I think that'd be a fair way to, to do it, but we'll see. We can, we can use, we can use the cash.
I have a good question for you, because how are they gonna decide, like, which town? You have all the towns in Lincoln County. Are they gonna do it the same way that we pay our percentages to the county?
They, they get to decide that. They could, they could decide to spend all the money whichever way they want, you know, would put it all into broadband or whatever, you know, else into some type of grant program for citizens or businesses. Or they could figure out some, you know, per capita formula to distribute it to the towns as long as we met the criteria in the federal requirements. So it's, the answer to your question is, we don't know yet.
Our rules that we gotta follow are stringent.
Yeah.
What, what is their rules?
I think they're, they're the same. I think they have the same categories, but I, to be honest with you, I was focusing on what we could do with our non-entitlement money. So, but I, I believe they're, they're similar, if not exactly the same, to the rules we have to follow. There's like four or five categories that, that we can focus on, but I did notice that under the capital projects section, access to healthcare was one of the criteria, so we'll see.
So access means you're taking it like access driving there.
Well, that's the way I'd like for them to interpret it.
Someone else may be saying, I just want to have access to healthcare. Some help.
Yeah, that's right. So hopefully it's.
Interpretation, huh?
Hopefully it's a broader.
Yeah.
Criteria rather than saying, you know, I wanna have access via my chart or whatever program they have through their healthcare provider.
I wanna be, see us do those, be careful that we're gonna be careful where we spend that because, you know, it's COVID related to, and then follow it from there, because I'd hate to see us in a situation where three years down the road and the government needs some money and they start looking at where this money went, we need some money back. You didn't spend it in the right places, the audit comes up.
Yeah.
You know, we don't need to be putting out taxpayers in that situation.
No, we definitely wanna be sure that our projects, whatever they are, meet their criteria.
Pre-approval for everything, you know, hopefully that'd be enough now.
Yeah. So that's the update on that, and then I sent you all an email. We're very fortunate, we have an intern from the Muskee School. She's in his master's program and he'll be starting on June 2nd. Yeah, and it's not costing the town anything. The school's paying for it, yeah. Yes, yeah, that's one of his requirements is to attend some of the meetings, the board meetings and the committee meetings, and at some point work on a project where it ends with a presentation to the board, just like we did with, with Eric last year.
Yeah, good.
That's very, that's a positive thing.
Do you have a name?
It's Evanice's first name. Try not to use the two.
So do we have any other town manager?
No.
Discuss.
I said, yeah, Chase is all done. They finished up and they're, they're all set.
Chase is done. Yeah. We have the other contractor, I think he's starting today or tomorrow on the.
Yeah, he's working down there. When I left, he's working down there today, so good, okay.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Phi is still on schedule for July 1st, so they're.
Yeah, it's moving right along, so.
Yeah, I've got, I've got some good feedback on the building, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate the fact that it does match the, the existing brick structures down there.
Yeah, that's nice. Looking promising.
Yeah.
So now we have just a little bit of work with the last contractor for sewer lines.
Yeah.
Which shouldn't take too long.
I'm hoping he's done within a week. And then we'll have that part out of the way, and on June 2nd is when you'll have your workshop with the folks from Wright Pierce and Malone McBroom to talk about their 30% design.
I got a question on that, since we're just based on that, is where are we at engineering money-wise on that project compared to where we should be and what the bid was?
Well, I think I shared with you at the last meeting that the, the preliminary estimates that Wright Pierce and Malone McBroom had were too high, you know, so. What we've done is ask them to go back to the drawing board and say, you know, you've gotta work with this budget, so tell us what we can do with, with this budget and. You know, and if we can't do everything we had planned, the, the flood wall, the walkways. Well, some improvements to the park and the storm drainage system, then we're gonna have to prioritize. And so that'll, that'll be the topic for your meeting next, next time, but, you know, on a very preliminary basis, they gave us a, a figure that was quite a bit higher than what we've got available for the balance of this project. I'm estimating we have about 3.1 million available for the, which is most of, you know, the money we had in the first place. Their, their estimates were a range, but they were above this by minimum two, two to 300,000. They're too high.
By 200, 300,000?
Yeah, and they're low side.
So not a million over.
They're not a million over, but I don't, I don't have a source for that kind of money. And for that kind of money, we were looking at an option that I didn't think was acceptable for our waterfront. We were looking at a corrugated metal wall. So, I mean, we can't put that up at our waterfront, you know. A sheet pilot. Essentially sheet pilot.
Right, yeah.
Five, four to five feet above elevation, the current elevation. I just can't see that. That's why we said, you know, you need to give this some more creativity and innovative thought and come back. What may, what may be, I don't wanna delve too much into that conversation, but it may be a situation we, where we in houses listening here too, I know, I haven't reviewed this with the waterfront committee, but we may be in a situation where we say we're gonna protect the, the businesses to some level, but we're not gonna protect them to the level that takes them out of the floodplain, you know, the, you know, going down 50 years from now. So I'd say my current floodplain, but it won't take them out of 12 to 13 feet elevation.
What does that do to their insurance rates? I mean, are we gonna help them there?
We would only help them if we can take them out of the 1% flood zone. That's the only way we're gonna help them with their, their, their insurance costs.
And what you're saying is we're not gonna have the money to do that.
Well, we don't know yet. That's what, that's what the group, I don't have. I don't have their final 30% drawing yet. We have a meeting with them earlier the week before to review those on a preliminary basis so that the staff aren't surprised when the, the presentation comes to you. So, yeah, we'll be reviewing that with them beforehand, but I don't know whether they've got a solution that, that meets the criteria. You know, when you talk about the money we've got available, you know, on the surface, it seems like that would be more than enough. You know, we're starting this project with, if you include all of the restroom and the sewer improvements, we're, we were looking at somewhere around 4.4 million. You say on the surface, well, jeez, that should be able to build us a wall and the drainage improvements, but. Now I'm hearing that that may not be the case. So, like I say, you'll, you'll need to stay tuned to, to, to see what they say on the second.
Apparently we have 3.1.
We have, right now, if you count the money that we haven't spent on the restroom, the money we haven't spent on the town chair of the, the sewer lines. We have about 3.1 in construction, construction management and contingency. 3.1, 3.2 million.
And then my question was in the beginning, and I didn't.
I'm sorry.
Come across right, was the engineering cost that we got a bid on.
Oh.
Where are we at with that and what was that price that they would not exceed?
Yeah, the price, okay, so we had a bid of 401,000. And we, we said at the time, we don't know exactly what we're gonna need until you get the 30% drawings done. So we split it into two phases, and so they're still in the first phase, and that first phase was 186,000. And they can't spend any more than that. So. Unless they do, unless we have a change order that we approve, but, yeah, so they're on budget with regard to design costs.
Okay.
First phase, sorry.
Yeah, no, thank you. It was the way I said it probably. Then once you started in, I said, that's great, we'll do that too. Other town manager items.
Just, I could mention the, the one item you and I talked about, about the new CDC guidelines about people who, which relate to folks who have had the vaccine not having to wear masks and how that impacts the town. And I think at, at Town Hall, we definitely wanna continue the mandatory mask restriction because we don't know who's had the vaccine and who hasn't, and people who are anti-vaccine and anti-mask just may not, you know, come forward with that information. So I think the best course would be to require the masks now. Mark asked me how long we would continue to have the, by appointment only, and that I, I wanna review with the staff there, and I can get back to you.
I do think it's a good compromise that everybody wears a mask in there. And then we start opening that up so that people can, you know, because it is quite an inconvenience making appointments.
Oh, yeah.
It's about being fear for the staff in there and everything. I think that's a good compromise to make sure everybody in that building is wearing a mask.
Yeah.
I think it's time to.
Yeah.
Kinda open up a little bit.
And it is, it is a time-consuming deal for the staff too, because they've gotta make the appointments, they gotta, they gotta go to the door when the person's supposed to be there, people are calling in saying they're late or they have to reschedule. It just, it just adds another, you know, another task, another few tasks. It just it just adds another, you know, another task, another few tasks.
Normality with them. So, yeah.
So we'll be happy when that is no longer necessary. But let me talk to the the front office staff and and see what we can come up with there.
I was gonna ask you, Matt, about I just thought of this, the with the sewer line ownership. Are we anywhere is, you know, have we left that with the municipality had to own them or, you know, with the great old sanitary district? I didn't know where we're at with that.
That is yet to be resolved. So I think the town's position has been, at least as I've understood the board, is that anything that's under public right of way or public ownership should be within the the responsibility of the sanitary district. And what they're saying, and that's that's true on roadways, right? You know, the 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 property owners responsibilities stop at the right of way line. And I'm saying the same thing should hold true with the parking lot. It should, they should have that. And definitely the town doesn't want to have responsibility for any sewer lines other than municipal.
Yeah.
You know, property sewer lines.
I agree.
So it's still it's still up in the air. They've turned down, you know, our request for that that pump out station. So we've said we'll maintain that. But I think the dialogue has to continue when we get that first clog in a sewer line that's under the parking lot, that's a private property caused event.
So in order.
No, good.
The at some point, somebody's gonna have to have ownership of it for the the grant money, right?
As far as the grant money goes, the grant is paying for the the line that's, they're they're paying their share of the line that's under the parking lot. So there's no question there. And we're paying for the short distances between where the the lines came out of those four properties. But now we need, yeah, now we need to change the direction because of the new line. So we're paying for that segment. It's a total of a hundred and twelve feet between those four businesses.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Yeah, we might be in a position where either the.
We're paying that out of the non grant local match money that we have.
Yeah.
Eighteen thousand dollars, basically. And that and that the the business owners understand that that's gonna be their responsibility, you know, when those clog up. Where it's gonna be an issue is when it, you know, gets to the public right of way and what's under the public right of way.
Well, we should be, this is an issue that goes way back and it's the same thing. We should be dealing with this right now so that we're not waiting for a clogged pipe somewhere to figure out who's responsible. We should be nailing that down. We just paid.
What would the board like to do on that? I mean, we've had, you know, I go back through the files and I see there's petitions from businesses that go back to the nineties that request the very same thing. And they're just not acted on by the the trustees. So if you if we want to have another joint meeting where we, you know, make our case, I could set that up. Yeah.
But we shouldn't be waiting for a clogged line to deal with something. We need to keep moving on it.
Frustrating.
So if you've got some direction for me, you know, I've gone to now two trustees meetings.
You've gone to the meeting. That's why I was asking. I know you've been to the meetings and they'll do a tan, but I wonder what the.
They're, you know, they're first first and foremost, they're looking out for their ratepayers. And if there's and I don't think I'm saying anything negative about them, if they don't have to spend a dime that someone, you know, that someone else will spend that dime, they'll do it, you know, they 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 won't approve it, you know. And that's that's it. And, you know, I think the ratepayers should be happy for them for that. But it's we're not in the sewer business. And the businesses, I believe, shouldn't be responsible for sewer lines under public right of way.
Yeah. No, I think we're all in agreement on that. We just don't know. I don't know what the next step. How do you how do you push them?
Push them over the edge of that. Is to have a joint meeting between the the Board of Selectmen and the the sanitary district trustees.
When we ran that line down the Biscuit Road and I say we, I paid for that line to go down from McDonald's down to the dialysis.
Okay.
And then what it was is the sewer district would buy back at ten percent. Out of the whole cost, they were only gonna pay ten percent of the cost of that to be taken over, all brand new pipe. And then I started charging people for using the line. And then the PUC and then that wound up and can't say, what kind of outfit are you guys running down here? You can't have somebody else charging. They need to step up and do their their job. And this is where we're at right now. With that, we spend all this money to make sure that that back parking lot is in good shape when we do it right. They need to step up and take responsibility for those lines up to the property line owner. It's all we're still.
Venture. No, it's a joint venture. Doesn't feel like it though, does it?
No, we've we've between the grant money and the town, we've put in, you know, tens of thousands of dollars into a sewer system that we don't own.
Yeah, you don't have the equipment to maintain it. Like you say, we're not in the sewer business. So maybe a joint meeting.
We're gonna do something.
Yeah, yeah.
I should set, I can set that up.
I know I'm not supposed to speak really, but you just said something that kind of jogged my mind. Why can't you go to the PUC and complain? And let them make a decision on who's in charge.
Yeah. No.
I mean, it might be worth it.
I don't know that they can tell a district what lines they are responsible for.
Have a monopoly in the town.
Some guidance at the very least, so.
Yeah, it's just we'll see what our our options are.
I mean, I think the town has really stepped up, provided a new line that they don't have a sag in anymore down there. You know, I mean, the town has stepped up and it's time for the sewer district to step up. Anything else, Matt?
No, I don't have anything. Yeah.
Robin, you got any selectman issues?
No, not a thing. I'm good.
Daryl.
Uh, no, I think we've gone over everything. Yeah. I've got nothing to add.
Can be good too.
I tell you, everybody's breaking up, Matt. I can't hear.
Daryl said he doesn't have anything.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I don't have anything, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You know what we didn't do is citizen communication. So nobody's, nobody's on. So I guess the house didn't have anything tonight. And just a big thanks to LCTV and Jeff. I didn't, you didn't hear this, Robin, beforehand, but Jeff from LCTV is here. And he's helped us with the the sound system and he will be helping us going forward so we can we can have hybrid meetings going forward where they're both put out on Zoom and and live.
Oh, terrific. Wonderful.
And then we're gonna get a super, I don't know if high definition is the right term, fiber line. Communicated with.
High speed.
High speed line. I was communicating via email with with else with Lincoln Communications, LCI, today. We're gonna look out a deal.
That's great.
So we'll have that at Town Hall. I'm not sure when, but we'll have that here in the next couple, three days.
I'm sorry, I'm not there with you guys and then you're kind of breaking up and I'm probably breaking up on your end. But I appreciate you putting up with me.
You're coming through loud and clear and I appreciate you calling in.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I guess I'm gonna second it. All those in favor? Yeah, there's Robin.
Thanks, Robin. I'm signing out.
Thank you. I think I signed all of those. Yeah, yeah.